I know you guys know the drill. Just if you for public comment, you can just write your address down in the on the log.
Try not to knock the microphone at this time. My name is Sue Weber, and firstly, I would like to read a letter from Tina Donakowski, who asked that the letter be presented on her behalf today as she could not attend this meeting, so I am using her allotted time to do that. Tina Donakowski is retired from GE, where she was vice president of the locomotive division. She also serves on the following boards: Fortune 500 Company Advanced Energy, which operates in 15 countries and employs over 10,000 people; TopBuild, that employs over 14,000 people; its 2023 gross revenues were $1.286 billion; and she serves locally on the board of Erie's Magnetics, that's headquartered in Mill Creek, although it's worldwide; their 2023 revenues were $190 million. So this is a corporate woman who has just an amazing business record. Please use my letter as a show of support at the upcoming Mill Creek Supervisors Meeting on May 14th. Dear Mill Creek Township Board of Supervisors, I write to you today to express my ardent support to place a government study question on the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot. Mill Creek voters deserve the opportunity to elect a commission to study the existing form of government of Mill Creek Township and to understand if an optional form of government could be adopted to better serve the needs of Mill Creek residents. In my 40-plus years of business, I have observed that most successful outcomes occur when leaders continually seek better and improved methods of operation. Maintaining the status quo in light of an ever-changing environment leads to inefficiencies and waste. At the very least, Mill Creek residents deserve to understand how Mill Creek is the only second-class Pennsylvania township in the top 25 largest with a completely unique form of government, these supervisors as paid employees. Government works best when it represents all constituents with transparency and accountability. A no vote to allow the study is just plain wrong. Do the right thing and authorize putting the question to the voters and let the voters decide. Sincerely, Tina Donakowski. I have additional comments, but I'll make them from myself under the agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Art Leopold. I live in Mill Creek. Thank you, Commissioners and Officers of Mill Creek. Appreciate the opportunity to speak for you. Democracy works best when citizens are most involved. In 2011, 2013, and now, citizens have a groundswell of opinion that they would like to study if there are better options or better ways to govern the community. Even the census is taken every 10 years, and that's obviously nationwide. Public meetings and sunshine into government helps the government work best and work for the people. So therefore, I ask that you place on the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot a question: Shall a government study commission of seven members be elected to the study the existing form of government of Mill Creek Township, Erie County, PA, to consider the advisability, the adoption of an optional form of government, to recommend whether or not optional plan of government should be adopted? Please remember, Martin Luther King suggested that democracy is not a state, but an act where we must all do our own part. The arc of moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice. And in closing, just today, those of you who are tech people, I was for 30 years, there's a new ChatGPT that's been announced, 4.0. And why would that be? Why? Because it's only been available for the last year or so, we're on 4.0. Because they know large corporation planning for the future is to upgrade and to review and to put in the hands of users and people the latest version is what's best for their business and for the community at large. And so I'd ask for you to help follow the Mill Creek residents and help them participate in their democracy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Anyone else wish to speak at this time? I will make the announcement again. We actually do have a public comment period specifically on the agenda today. It's line it's number 12 on the agenda, and that is dedicated completely to public comment on the government study commission. So if you would like to wait until then, that is fine. I have a feeling that's when we'll have most of most of our residents speak. But this, like I said, this is an this is an item on the agenda, so you are still able to speak. But this is you public comment for agenda items.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is William Schaff. I live up on Westbury Farms, have been a Mill Creek resident and property owner of multiple properties for the last 45-plus years. I was a real estate broker and appraiser until December, when I retired. At any rate, my request to you this morning is to seriously consider item 12 in your agenda item, to put that on the ballot and let the citizens, your constituents, have informed and educated result of whether we really do have the best form of government. It's not a decision today up or down. It's an opportunity to inform all of the people that live in Mill Creek Township as to whether we're really heading in the right direction. So I respectfully request that you consider that and put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. As most of you know me, I'm John Grow, former Mill Creek Supervisor and presently a township, elected township auditor. And I'm going to talk about item number nine here regarding the compensation for auditors. And I'm going to be brief as possible. One thing to keep in mind, I'm also an instructor of government classes, local government classes with the Pennsylvania Boroughs Association. One of the oddities regarding second-class township is the position or the elected office of auditor. And the role of that in township government is to, of course, do a financial audit when you got a smaller municipal budget. Our budget is $31 million, there about, plus or minus something in that range. I don't have the exact number here in front of me, but we have CPA firms do our auditing, make sure that the financial expenditures are correct and everything. The sole job of the elected auditor is to set the pay and benefits for the supervisors who work, who are paid as administrators. One thing to keep in mind, when a supervisor is elected under second-class Township Code, it is strictly in the role of legislator. To take an administrative role is an option. There is no requirement that any of the supervisors take the positions that are out there as far as administrators here in Mill Creek Government. So the oddity, what I'm getting at, I'll just get right to the point here, is that Governor Shapiro recently signed a state law that increased the pay for auditors, for the elected auditors. We go from $10 per hour to $18 an hour. Okay? I know that's a lot of money there, and, you know, I got to put off with a Swiss bank account, so, okay. Actually, our meeting is very brief when we meet. It's usually after the reorganizational meeting in January that the supervisors have. It's the day after. So it's generally 20 minutes, 30 minutes at the most. What's odd about this is that they're hopefully going to pass a resolution to increase the pay. I will not be getting any pay increase because I'm still in office. I believe it's going to be for the next group of auditors that, you know, should be successful in running. They will get the $18 an hour. It's not a complaint from me. It's not ever never been about the money. But it's the the appearance is what this is. Supervisors are going to pass a resolution setting the pay for auditors. Our job as auditors is to set the pay for the supervisors. I think you see what I'm talking about here. This is one of the little problems with second-class Township Code, and especially now that Mill Creek is the size of it, as it is, the budget and the services that we provide. So I just wanted to make that comment about that. Thank you for allowing me to do that, and may I come back up again under item 12?
Yes.
I don't want to
Absolutely.
I know what it's like. I've been in those seats before there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on then, we have the approval of the minutes. We have our minutes from April 30th, 2024, regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion made by Mr. Olet and seconded by Mr. Mock. Any discussion? Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mock, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the bills.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Olet and seconded by Mr. Mock. Any discussion? Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mock, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. Number six on our agenda are bids and quotations. For our first item, we have a flood detention basin mowing bid results and award from our engineering department. Mr. Rodemoyer.
Good morning. First up is for the flood detention basin. This is for nine flood detention basins that the township owns. We did seek out five quotes from different contractors. We did not receive submissions back from Dahl Camper, Afton, Consol. We did receive back from Flagship Outdoor Services. Unfortunately, there was a couple line items that they weren't able to complete, I think, due to equipment. In the last one, we did receive a quote from Conco Landscape for $21,300, and the engineering department is recommending approval of Conco for that work for 2024.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Rodemoyer?
I have one, Kim.
Sure.
Rob, you mentioned that those two, the Love Farm and the Valley Ridge Basins, they did not quote those.
Correct.
And you think it's because of equipment?
It is. It's, yeah, you need much larger equipment. I think Rob probably has a better experience than I do, just, I think, previously, so yeah.
Okay. Are those two of the more challenging basins to?
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Okay, because, you know, we all noticed they're $6,000 less than Kuntco.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming
Even if you break that out, Kuntco's still cheaper, yeah, for the other line items.
Okay, so somebody actually spoke with Flagship
Yeah.
Regarding the challenges of those two basins. Okay, thank you, Rob.
Sure.
That's all I wanted.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Kuntco as the bidder winner?
So moved.
I will second.
Motion was made by Mr. Olet and seconded by Mr. Mock. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will call for a vote. Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mock, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. Evanston Road Sidewalk Project Bid Results and Award, also Mr. Rodemoyer.
Yes, this is for the 2024 CBBG project for Evanston Road Sidewalk. This was a public bid. We did receive five bids for that project, with Empire Services being the low bid. Unfortunately, their bid was not submitted correctly. There was two specific forms that were the major issues as far as incomplete, I guess you could say, as far as the bid goes in regards to their certification for bidder regarding equal opportunity, and then the special provision for the signature page associated with that bid. The engineering department is recommending rejection of that bid for for that those two reasons, for an incomplete bid submission, and we would be recommending that Emma Dahl and the next second lowest bidder be awarded that bid for the Evanston project for $187,000,
Great. Any questions for Mr. Rodemoyer? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Olet and seconded by Mr. Mock. Any discussion? Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mock, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. The Wilkins Run Bid Results and Award. Mr. Rodemoyer.
We did put this on the agenda for hoping for an award. Unfortunately, we did receive comments back from FEMA in regards to some issues that we still have to address permitting reasons, and I believe the decision was to table. I recommend to table this, to not award or make any recommendation at this point for this project.
Thank you. I believe board action is required. Do I have a motion to table the Wilkins Run Award?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, calling for the vote. Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mock, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries to table. Now we have the 2024 Small 88 Upgrade Project Bid Result and Award. Mr. Rodemoyer, again.
Yes, we this is for some miscellaneous sidewalk repairs that we were required to do under the voices agreement. We did seek out for nine specific locations in regards to these repairs. We reached out to three different contractors as far as receiving quotes for these this little bit of work, and the low quote was from Brazil Construction for $15,943, and we're making a recommendation to approve Brazil for this work.
Thank you very much. Any questions regarding the bid result? Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Rozelle?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Olet, seconded by Mr. Mock. Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mock, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have Zook Park Pickleball Fence. And to speak on that is Ms. Marsdeller.
Thank you. The Parks and Recreation Department would like to add additional fencing in between the pickleball courts at Zook Park. The additional fencing would help contain balls to each court's area and help eliminate issues with interference with play happening on other courts. Each court would have a gated entrance to allow people to pass through, yet enclose the court while a game is going on. A safety top rail topper would be installed on the fence as well. The fence installation was accounted for in the Parks and Recreation Capital Budget. Keystone Fence, who installed the current fence at the parks last year, quoted the project at $12,480. This is under the requirement of $12,600 and also comes in under the budget allotment of $16,000. There would be a capital budget surplus of $3,520 upon completion. It is my recommendation to approve the fence installation by Keystone Fence for $12,480.
Any questions for Ms. Marsdeller? Any timeline, I will ask, on this?
Hopefully very soon.
Okay. I know there are a lot of anxious pickleball players that would want to know.
The courts are still open and actively being used.
Okay.
This will just make for happier pickleball.
Happier, okay, okay. All right, good to know. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the offense?
So moved.
I'll second.
A motion was made by Mr. Mock and seconded by Mr. Olet. Mr. Mock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. We have a sewer truck lease in the Public Works Department, in our sewer department. Mr. Donakowski.
Thank you. Good morning. The sewer department is seeking approval to lease a 2024 Chevy Silverado 1500 double cab to replace a current fleet vehicle. This vehicle will this vehicle will be $849.82. I anticipate that we will $5,098.92 of the sewer department's capital budget. I recommend approval of this vehicle.
And I Kim, clear. I'll open it up for
Yes.
Mr. Mock, how do you vote?
No.
The Highland Meadows Replacement Pump.
Department is seeking approval to purchase a new Barnes 4-inch Meadows pump station, $1 $534.74 under CoStar's 212-20 Funds for this will be taken from the replacement pump line of the sewer department 2,190 pump supply.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
By Mr. Mock. Any discussion? I vote yes. Motion carries. Whispering Woods Replacement Pump, Public Works.
4-inch submersible chopper pump for the Whispering Woods Number One Pump Station, $1,273.40 under CoStar's contract 54 01-SB. Funds for this will be taken from the replacement pump line I recommend the purchase of this pump from Miller
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Olet.
Yes.
Mr. Mock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Coast Grant Vehicle Purchase from the MPD.
Thank you. Recently, the township has awarded a two-year extension of the Coast Grant by the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, and the grant award allocated up to $35,000 to purchase a new vehicle for the crisis clinician to use. I learned that Champion Ford here in the township recently became a CoStar's vendor. They provided a quote of $32,674.20 for a 2024 Ford Escape. This is the CoStar's price, and their CoStar's number is 154979, and I request approval for purchase of this vehicle with the use of 100% Coast Grant funding.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Chief Mock? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Olet and seconded by Mr. Mock. Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mock, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. And I skipped the Shorehaven Pump Station. I'm sorry, so many pump stations, so little time. I apologize. Shorehaven Pump Station RFP Results and Award. Mr. Donakowski.
We recently received engineering proposals for our upcoming Shorehaven Pump Station project. Pricing is as follows: Burgess and Niple, $45,400. This does not include geo-studies for a retaining wall design. Greenman Peterson, $83,700. LSSE, formerly Raybell, is $113,200. And Urban Engineers was $115,760. There is currently $86,320 remaining in the Shorehaven line of the sewer department capital budget. Due to Greenman Peterson being the lowest proposal that includes all necessary study and design, I recommend that they be
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Donakowski? Motion was made by Mr. Olet and seconded by Mr. Mock. Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mock, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. And to speak on this is Attorney Shaw.
Yes, we have three talked in prior meetings, the planning and development documents. Next is an amendment to Chapter 55, Article 3 of materials associated with, at this point, it's the Police Department and the Volunteer Fire Department to reflect the addition of the Mill Creek Township Fire consolidate that process for the volunteer to obtain recoveries as may be allowed by law. We're also looking into the same ability to recover the costs incurred by the ambulance as well. Draft of the ordinance has been circulated internally for comments, and there are, the current zoning ordinance was referred the ordinance to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation of any proposed changes. The Planning Commission accepted comments on that ordinance and made a recommendation at their May meeting. The board will now consider the proposed amendments. Most, vast majority of the proposed amendments are kind of fixing typos and just things that have been found a couple of minor substantive changes. And that's all that's currently
Very much. Resolution 2024 R11. This is a resolution pursuant to the 2015 R20 in Municipal Records Manual to approve proposed And to speak on this, I believe Attorney Shaw.
Yeah. Municipal records maintained by the Police Department, the HR Department, and the Public Works Department that are reaching the end of their retention period under the Municipal Records Manual. The records to be disposed include MVR BWC footage that includes test recordings from March 1 of '24 through March 28th of '24, traffic stops from February 14th of '24 through February 27th of '24, incident only in special circumstances from 5/14/22 through 5/27/22, and case report, arrest report, and SRR unknown type reports from 5/14 of 2004 through 5/27 of '04. In addition, there are medical dental vision claims, unemployment comp claims, insurance and workers comp claims, and employee files where employee ended in 2018, and applications for employment and financial records from MTWA and MTSA, including AR, AP, payroll, and financials from 2014 through 2016. My recommendation would be to approve disposal of those records.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Attorney Shaw? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion was made by Mr. Mock and seconded by Mr. Olet. Any discussion? If not, I will call for a vote. Mr. Mock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. Next on our agenda, number nine, Resolution 2024 R12 is a resolution of Mill Creek Township, Erie County, Pennsylvania, providing for auditor compensation. Speak on this, I believe Attorney Shaw.
Yes, as former Supervisor Grow pointed out, the Pennsylvania Legislature and the governor recently enacted Act 10 of 2024, meting the provisions of the Second Class Township Code concerning determining compensation for elected auditors. Under Act 10, an auditor entering office after the effective date of April 14, April 15 of 2024 shall receive compensation for each hour employed in the duties as a township auditor as outlined in Section 901 of the Second Class Township Code, in an amount of $18 an hour to complete the annual audit settlement and adjustment for not more than 50 hours to audit the accounts of a public official who handles public funds when a vacancy occurs in that office. Auditors in a township with a population of 10,000 or more may not receive compensation more than $3,500 for completing the annual audit and settlement and adjustment. Before you as a resolution adopting the new compensation provision for auditors taking office after April 15 of 2024, my recommendation would be to approve this resolution.
Any questions for Attorney Shaw? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
A motion was made by Mr. Olet and seconded by Mr. Bach. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bach, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes, motion carries. Congratulations to the future auditors. Something like that. Number ten on the agenda, Glenwood Park Low Pressure Sewer Project Agreement with Greeman Peterson, Inc. This was tabled from our four-thirty twenty twenty-four meeting. Mr. Burdemeyer?
Well, I believe at this point we have to do some certain requirements. I think specifically we have to pass a resolution. This is going to, the intent is for this to be a sewer project. So I would assume we'd have to table it again.
Yeah, my suggestion would be to table it again as well as just simply remove it from the agenda at this point until we're in a position to reintroduce it.
Okay. If I make a motion, or if someone makes a motion to remove it from the agenda?
Yeah.
That would suffice? Okay. Do I have a motion to remove the Glenwood Park Low Pressure Sewer Project from the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bach, how do you vote?
Yes.
Remove from the agenda. Strategic plan that will be presented by Ashley of Park and Rec. Ms. Amy Murdock. I will say that I am a lot of work over clearly in the last that has been done by many people within the Park and Rec Department and beyond. Screen just a little bit so that it faces the audience a little better.
Can everyone see that?
Can everyone see? Is that better? Gary Winchell, can you see it? Okay. You're in that far corner, so.
Okay, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm very excited and pleased to introduce our five-year Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan today. The completion of this plan marks a pivotal milestone in our journey towards fostering a vibrant and connected community in Mill Creek. And I'm honored to have the opportunity to share this transformative roadmap with you. Our strategic plan was developed through the diligent efforts of our esteemed planning consultant team at Altair, led by Planner Amy Murdock. The strategic plan is the culmination of extensive research, community engagement, and forward-thinking planning. It reflects our collective commitment to enhancing the quality of life for all of our residents at Mill Creek Township, ensuring that our parks and recreational amenities continue to serve as cherished assets for generations to come. Over the past several months, our consulting team has worked closely with residents to assess our current needs, identify opportunities for improvement, and charter a course for sustainable growth and development. The result is now a plan that aligns closely with the goals and aspirations that the Parks and Recreation Department has as well as the mission and vision of the Mill Creek Township. Throughout the presentation today, we'll dive into some of the key components of our strategic plan, highlighting its overarching focus areas and key insights. From enhancing park facilities and recreation programs to fostering inclusivity, each aspect of this plan will undoubtedly enrich the lives of residents and strengthen the fabric of our community. So here to speak more on our Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan is Amy Murdock.
Thanks, Ashley. Should I? Okay, yeah, that works. Good morning, I'm Amy Murdock. I'm a certified planner. I do work with Altair Consulting Group. I started my career actually in Erie County as the greenways planner. So it's really, this type of work is really exciting to me, and we appreciate the opportunity to be a partner with Mill Creek in this. I'm going to keep it high level because I know we have a really full agenda today and talk a little bit about the planning process and just the high-level focus areas and where this is going. Okay, so let's just take a minute and demystify planning a little bit, right? So planning, the way we describe it, is really this sort of art of taking public engagement. What you all as the community have told us is important to you, and then evaluating the data that we see, which then that really becomes the equation for the focus areas for this process, okay? So the public engagement portion of this included three workshops. And we had a one additional open house here and a community survey where we had over five hundred responses to the question. So we had pretty good, pretty good engagement. And I would say overall, folks seem really, really excited about Parks and Recreation, especially this time of year. It's hard, it's hard not to be. And I think I had a lot of really good things to say about Ashley and the department as a whole. And then on the data side, what we looked at was the inventory that the township has. How many parks do you have? What kinds of programs and amenities are happening? We looked at national benchmarks. So there's an organization called the National Recreation and Parks Association. They benchmark, you know, all kinds of municipalities and parks and recreation programs nationally. So we took a really hard look at that as well. Walkability to parks. The team in the planning department did some really great GIS analysis around that and some mapping work. Okay, and I should add too, I'm not going to go into real deep dive level here, but I will stick around. I'll be available for you, okay? So things that we learned, and I think we were a little surprised at top thing that we learned is residents really right? What we heard from folks was this really to walk, hike, ride a bike. That was by far the top priority that we heard from folks, okay? The other thing that we learned was not everyone knows where these parks and trails and opportunities are, which that surprised us a little bit. And so we really felt part of this plan really focuses on targeting residents, being, reaching out, doing some data analysis every year on the residents that are being reached by some of these communication efforts, and really try to make sure that we're reaching everyone, okay? And the third area was the township by far, by every measure, whether it's financial, whether it's staff, the number of parks and amenities, you're punching way, way above your weight compared to other municipalities of your size, okay? So this department and this township, this team, is doing a remarkable job compared to other municipalities of its size. So something you should really, really feel proud of and really feel good about. But unfortunately, their resources are spread a little bit thin, right? And so we're really recommending any opportunity to try to centralize some of these resources, focused investment into programs and amenities that are in high demand from residents that we talked about. We really want to see that sort of targeted investment and focus that allows the department to operate really, really efficiently, okay? So I think, I'm going to just talk high level because I know we have a few more things on the agenda, not get into some of the data, and we'll have that available on the website, and we can be available for questions. But in terms of focus areas and recommendations, one, promoting connectivity and walkability to recreational assets. One area that we're recommending in addition to increasing, you know, trails within parks, is also to think about sidewalk connectivity. So there's this kind of golden rule that we think about in terms of parks and recreation and connectivity is that in a heaven, every citizen is within a ten-minute walk to a park, right? That's challenging in a municipality like Mill Creek, but to the extent we can find some areas and make some progress and focus in on sidewalk improvements in addition to trails and amenities within parks, we want to try to do that because we really, really want folks to be connected to those opportunities, to those green spaces and parks, okay? The second area, boosting marketing promotion and community engagement. We're recommending an annual communication strategy that's pretty robust. So we want to reach folks through many different mediums, right? Whether it's, you know, social media, whether it's traditional newsletter that the township sends out. But we also want to try to collect some data on who's being reached, right? So what we found through this process was most of the folks that were engaged in the process were like forty to sixty, which is great. But we want to really try to engage a whole range of citizens in the township, okay? And then again, this targeted investments in a centralized and high-demand recreational assets. So you talked about Tina, who's a really strong businesswoman. I think any person in business would tell you the more efficiency that you can gain, you know, the more return on investment you'll have. We think there's some opportunities to really kind of centralize some of this activity so that the department can do even more with what they have. Okay, I think that's all I have, Ashley, unless there's anything else you'd like me to add.
No, I mean, we would like to thank everyone. There are some people here who were involved in the planning process and engaging with us and helping give our feedback. The Parks and Rec Department is extremely excited to move forward with some of the recommendations of this plan. And, you know, we continue to strive to be a resource for our community, for health and happiness and a feeling of togetherness and a sense of community. So that's really, this plan's going to kind of help lay the steps of what we can do to improve our park system and improve our recreational offerings and try to be the best that we can for Mill Creek.
Yeah, sorry.
That is awesome. Thank you. I have some questions. The project that Mill Creek was supposed to put in some money and partner with the state where you took the trail, you know, from upward begins at the top of Peninsula Drive, and then swung it around through so that people didn't have to bike and walk on the road there, and it connected right to the park. That could be part of our recreation. What happened to that?
I can speak to that.
Sure.
Mr. Waldinger was, is actually, you know, our planning director, just so everyone knows, Matt Waldinger. He actually is, at this time, looking at additional resources that we, and grant opportunities. Actually, he and I are taking this nine-week class right now that is instructing us on the availability of grant opportunities at the federal level through the Appalachian Coordination through the federal government. So we are identifying other opportunities for funding for that project. And that would be in conjunction with PennDOT and DCNR. And the initial plan was to connect at Presque Isle, go in front of Sarah's, and then come up to the Tom Ridge Environmental Center. So that's still a work in progress. The money is still available to us, Ms. Weber, so that has not, that is still available. And I believe that was through D C N R? D C E D. Well, unfortunately, what happened was the project budget was conceived in 2019, and we received our grant in 2019. And since then, the project has quadrupled in cost. Basically because of 2020.
Yeah, I mean, it's an item we're not abandoning. We just need to continue to find ways to fund it. But yeah, we hope to add connectivity in as many places as we can and help people find our parks, enjoy our parks, and enjoy the opportunities that we have here in Mill Creek. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really enjoyed reading the information from the study that you did. Is that for public consumption?
So following this meeting, I'll be posting it on the Parks and Rec page within the township website at millcreektownship.com.
So for those residents that would like to take a closer look at the results of that, head to our website.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you so much, Ms. Murdock, for being here for the presentation. Okay, number twelve on the agenda is the Government Study Commission. This is a public comment opportunity. At the April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four public meeting, the Board of Supervisors was asked to pass an ordinance that will put a question on the November twenty twenty-four ballot, asking the residents if they would agree to forming a government study commission. Today, we have dedicated a public comment period solely to the residents for their input on forming a commission is doing our due diligence to determine the cost associated with this study, as the study also working on identifying possible grant opportunities, creating a budget for the study, as well as coordinating a general timeline and scope of work for the commission. Once we have identified the costs associated with the study, the board will educate the residents and consider passing the government study ordinance. Found a CD holding the previous study that was done in 2012. So thank you, Cheryl. And with the help of IT Coordinator John Fleming and Communications Coordinator Sam Peterson, online for residents to peruse. I thought it was important for residents to see what the previous study use that as a springboard for what might be done in the future. And I also didn't know how many people were, had access to the previous study and the results. So that is available on our, I believe it's the board, Sam calls it, the flashing board that comes on our website, as well as it is in the, there's another section. There's, there are two places to find it anyway. But if you put, if you put in government study, you would be able to find it on our website. But it's right on the front page. Okay, with that, we will open this up for public comment. We are going to be allowing three minutes for our residents to speak, and we just ask that you say your name at the podium and write your name in at the, on the I think there's a tablet up there. Okay. Who wants to be first?
Good morning. My name is Bob Enos, and I have a letter here from Robin Shepner, who is my new hero after reading her resume here. But she expected to retire in her fifties. Instead, became involved in running the family business, American Tinning and Galvanizing, after the death of her father. Erie from Naples, retired, returning permanently in Erie in two thousand workforce, invested millions of dollars in infrastructure and equipment, earned prestigious aerospace certification, consistently enjoyed double-digit growth. Programs and activities were implemented to foster teamwork and camaraderie. This is the letter that she's allowed me to read. Please use this email to signal my ardent support for a government study about the Mill Creek Supervisors. Especially since Mill Creek is the only mid-sized township with paid supervisors, it would appear logical to discuss why this unique situation exists and the rationale behind it. If Mill Creek is the only township participating in this form of leadership, what do all those other research, all those other municipalities know that we don't? As in any enterprise, it is always beneficial to investigate, research, and compare other structures and organizations. This request is for a research committee only, not a suggestion to terminate any personnel or process. This request has the potential to improve and enrich Mill Creek's leadership and financial security. I respectfully ask all three of the Supervisors to authorize putting a measure on the ballot to commence a study and determine a best practices form of government for our township, and then let the voters decide. Sincerely, Robin Shepner, President and CEO, American Tinning and Galvanizing Company. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enos.
Whoops. I guess I have to, have to get down here. My name is Jim Stedman. My wife and I reside in Mill Creek, and I'm a retired lawyer who maintained a practice in Gerard for over 45 years. During the period of time that I was in practice in Gerard, I represented four townships of the second class, like Mill Creek Township. I represented McCain Township, Connetot Township, which is in the southwest corner of Erie County, Elk Creek Township, which is just east of Albin, and Springfield Township. And I served them for over 40 years. The second-class code was written for those kind of townships. They were all small, all predominantly rural, all with small populations with lots of rural roads to maintain. Budgets were small, supervisors were frugal, taxes were low, supervisors were determined to maintain it that way. There's a big difference between running for office and getting elected and being qualified to do the job. We had a situation that arose in one of the townships I represented where we had elected auditors. Now, you've just gone through the process of increasing the pay, I think, for your auditors. But in rural townships of the second class, the auditors actually audit the books. We learned that they didn't know what they were doing. We had a tremendous loss in one of our townships where the treasurer also knew that they didn't know what they were doing. And so she managed to feather her own nest with money from the township to $374,000. Fortunately, she was bonded, so the township didn't lose any money. We got the money back. But the fact of the matter is, being elected as an auditor or even as a supervisor doesn't necessarily mean that you really grasp all the ins and outs of it. I'm impressed by the quality of leadership that you have here. Also during those years, I served on the Gerard Borough Council because we're borough residents. And during that period of time, we went from a council form of government to a borough manager form of government. It was an eye-opening experience. Suddenly, instead of having the borough secretary who knew everybody in town and everybody -- the management of the borough shaped up. And the borough citizens were well-served and the taxes were not significantly increased. I think Gerard Borough is a very well-run borough now, and it has had a borough manager for about 50 years. So in terms of population, Mill Creek Township's way bigger than Gerard Borough or any of those small townships. But as the last commentator pointed out, it's the only township in the top 25 in the state that is still using the three township supervisors as a means for running the government. And I think moving to a borough manager or a township manager or some other form of government should be at least studied. There's nothing to lose and everything to gain. So I urge you to put this on the ballot to allow the citizens to vote on it. Thank you for your time, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Art Olajeri. I've been a --
Rob, would you be, oh, okay. I was going to say, would you fix that?
I've been a resident of Mill Creek for 35-plus years.
Don't worry, we won't cut your time or anything. We do have an improved system, though. Is everyone noticing a difference? Can hear a little better?
Thank you.
People watching the livestream are saying that it's cutting out right now.
People, oh, they're saying that it's cutting out?
It's more than live, personally.
Okay.
Okay. Art Olajeri, I've been a resident for 35-plus years. I'm a voter. I vote 100% of the time. I'm a taxpayer. I operated my business, I'm retired now, but I operated my business in Mill Creek for 30 years. I'm here because I would like to see that government study on the ballot. I was, I'm also here because two of you voted no initially that you didn't want it on the ballot, and that that's actually why I'm here.
That's not true.
You know, okay, all right.
We did not, there was no vote.
Okay, all right. I stand corrected.
Yes.
You know, being a businessman, we always would look for better ways to operate our business. How can we be more efficient? How can we be more effective? And one of the things we would always do is look at our peers. What are our peers doing? And we would compare it. Do we like that? Do we not like that? When they were doing something different, we would ask ourselves, is their way better? Is our way better? Let's study it. As we all know by now, 25 other second-class townships are doing something different. Why are they doing one thing and we're doing something else? I'm not saying one is right. I'm not saying one is wrong. I think we need to study it. You know, as time goes on, things change, economics changes, problems get bigger each year, not smaller. People change. Everything changes. So we constantly have to look at, are we doing a good job in our entity? And we should always be studying it, such as evaluating everything that we do. And we're always looking for best practices. And this is what I'm advocating. I'm not saying that we have the right answer or they do, but I think it should be on the ballot. And the people that you represent, you should, you kind of owe it to them to put it on the ballot. And I respectfully ask that you do do that. It's a little scary when, when I hear that there's pushback on having that on the ballot. I think we should give the taxpayers the right to choose their form of government, and let's just study it. If they opt for the status quo, so be it. But if they feel that another form of government is better, you represent them, we should go in that direction. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Art.
Just for the record, there was no vote that was taken to not put this up, that was, that for an ordinance, there was no, no vote on, there was no ordinance that has been brought forward yet. We were asked two weeks ago to consider an ordinance by Ms. Weber. And, and so I am not sure where that would come from, Mr. Olajeri, that there were two of us that voted against it or that are against it, because that is simply not true.
Stand corrected.
Thank you.
I think what he meant was, in your sessions to discuss it, Jim indicated that you, he had pushed back from you about it.
From our executive session?
Yep.
That he spoke of?
My name is Sue Weber. Supervisor Claire and I met last Friday. I asked her what her objection would be to placing the study commission on the ballot so the voters could decide if they wanted to study. She said she was looking at how much the study would cost. Kim, I shared with you at that time, and I'm sharing with all three of you at this time, there have been recent government studies in municipalities in Pennsylvania, and some are going on now. We have checked their budgets. I have. At most, this study should not cost more than $1 per resident, plus our grants available, which might make it a zero expenditure. At the time, I made you very aware of our deadline, and you know that if you don't make a decision, then we have to go out there and get thousands of signatures and get this on the ballot ourselves, which is not right. At that time, I remarked, put the question on the ballot. Between now and November, you can arrive at a reasonable cost projection for the study and let the Mill Creek voters know what that amount is. If they don't want the money spent, they will vote against conducting this study, and it's just that simple. There's no need to hold anything up. It should be their decision, not yours. We have statutory deadlines to meet as far as circulating petitions to get the question on the ballot. So don't use cost research as an excuse to hold things up. Again, the voters will decide in November if they want to spend the money, because at that time, they will know the cost. If you refuse to place this question on the ballot, you're saying that Mill Creek voters, after learning the costs before November, are not smart enough to make an independent decision on how they want their money spent. And at the beginning of this, you said that we're, we're creating a timeline for the government study. No, you don't do that. That's prescribed by law. The government study, the way it runs, is prescribed by law. You don't create a timeline. How long the study will be, you don't do that. If you are concerned about $1, $255,000 more for the properties than those appraisals show they were worth, you did -- paid $1,280, $1,284,000 acre when the land that she -- at $285,000 per acre. Kim, I also noted what practices, including cost-saving measures of other townships. This is actually a hell of a -- more money than the study costs. What a good deal, a year of -- our township more economically and efficiency, efficiently. Years ago, when I was a Mill Creek supervisor, I learned a lot from the city of Erie. We saved a lot of money by purchasing salt with them. As a -- joint purchasing program, where especially small townships save a lot of money by purchasing everything. It's important that we learn from other townships. Again, please -- cost is what's holding you up. You will know it before November. You will be able to communicate and decide if that money is money they want to spend. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't -- relay that it, passing an ordinance without doing due diligence. Hold anything up. Two weeks ago, we'd been presented with this, and we are, we're doing our homework. We're dotting our i's and crossing our -- so we'll be, I believe, signatures wouldn't be until June. Something like that. Yeah, I think it was, I think it's -- like I said, we just want to make --
Done the Mill Creek planning. Some unbelievable -- Attorney Stedman talked -- in running a township, making decisions, or planning numerous times. Of course, we weren't unpaid -- same setup that you folks are. Probably the greatest experience that we had in understanding -- Mill Creek Mall. And when they entered that room, we were like kindergarten people, trying to understand the tax. We had nothing, okay? Better at everything we did. You don't want to -- I agree with -- but as someone who's had -- more difficult and much -- in 1984. State, sometimes -- to take a deep look at the -- would have the opportunity. I'm going to be -- I'm done. It's time for a -- Township was --
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm getting a twofer today. Let me speak. Supervisor here all my life. I can tell -- township growing. Up on Cold Creek, two -- mine. Okay. We're -- no longer exist. Pay. Boy, I think we had storms that -- need the well. You know, I have experienced -- was the former gentleman there talking -- make a quick statement here. This is -- have the voice and all of -- I think the last time that, that probably -- problem there. But anyway, was a petition drive, because the Board of Supervisors at that time refused by a vote of two to one to have an ordinance to put the question on the ballot, playing politics. So anyway, there was a success with the petition drive. It did put the question on the ballot, and there were 20 candidates seeking to serve on that, and I was one of them at that time. And actually, just a little bit of history, Lily Broadcasting was kind enough to do interviews. We gave each one of us a minute, and then they broadcast that show on like two weeks before the election. That way, those who were voting would know who they were voting for and what they stood for. So anyway, there was, the question was approved, and then there were seven members, I believe, that were selected to serve on that commission. I'll be blunt about it, I don't know if they really did their job. They come out with no recommendation. Move ahead to 2015, myself and Rick Fagasky, who was a supervisor at that time, we had the leadership and the courage to enact an ordinance to put the question on the ballot. And sadly with that one, the Sunday before the election day, the editorial board of Erie Times News took it upon themselves, ill-advised and not knowing what they were talking about, to say no to the question. Now, does a newspaper have that much influence? Possibly. I don't know for sure, but it failed. And it was too bad that that person that made that opinion didn't know more about the question. I think what his comment was -- I do urge this board of supervisors to show the leadership that Rick Fiegaski and I did. Do not have the, the board had not make sure that you're exercising the leadership that you were elected to do. The people that are interested in doing this, I mean, wow, it's great. Don't make them go out and do a petition drive, you know, and other people are going to see this as like, wait a second here. They don't want to, you know, the board of supervisors does not want to listen to what the, what the residents are here are saying. Just one quick final comment. As I mentioned earlier, that I'm an instructor with the Pennsylvania Boroughs Association. I've been with them for 22 years, teaching local government classes. And when I teach a class for newly elected officials, one of the things we talk about is what municipality they're from, how it's structured and so on. And of course, I share what Mill Creek is about. And the look that I get most generally is a deer in the headlights. There, what, your budget's $30 million and you've got three elected supervisors and they work as administrators? Yeah, yeah, that's what we have. We're in the top 25. Of course, we do know that we're the second most populated second-class township in Pennsylvania. Most, in most populated municipality in Pennsylvania. So we're we, our government should be run just a little bit differently than that. Money should not be an issue. Show some leadership, guys. I think you can. I know you can do it. Don't make these people go out and do a petition drive. It's just going to irritate them.
50 West Ridge, Ben of supervisor, let thank you for clarifies or grow and others here. Delay what should be a very reach out to other townships that have see if it has led to more efficiency, to better place to live. The police department supervisors have by and large done vision about whether we continue this form of government go out and do a petition. It's work because budgeting should not be the
From Bell Valley. Here with all but I have Mill Creek year ago. Something alley. Interest that of us from I have session. It's a, it's just a request. And put it on now and route. We have to have them print it for the June 18th. Have, thank you for this.
The agenda to I've been researching again two weeks ago when Ms. And
Today's not is that required in the agenda. Do that. Can't pass don't have door would not be possible.
Considering the
One of the things that fair supervisors that's thing I think
Okay. In a factual so question to create
That Oh.
Mill Creek resident. My comment and Sue Weber for understand your meeting was an hour and a half long. Wonderful. When but also for I think what should be decision about the this point to examine and then you have communicate that to the citizen they have that information. To ask Attorney Shaw ballot and then all of the homework can be thank you so much for, for
I, and I appreciate to coordinate a meeting and again knowing the cost and, and care about the cost, not is, but that, so I want you to really seriously where an ordinance and right, you are right. We can, we can determine the money really it involves money and I so whether or not, and I other I've reached out to different to try to gauge. But thank you.
First video comment on the agenda. Okay, you You know, I a lot township. Concern board township. You have to today. Two tuning is two. To be a community saying only one town paper.
Papers here.
But to do in Russia. The petitions and all that. You know, so I've heard accusations. But if you're talking, it's a good thing. Might get pissed off. Oh, excuse me for saying that. You may, you may not quite they could in return work you.
Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Crowe. Did you have time left?
Sorry. I'm sorry. I do have moments where I forget before I come up here what I'm going to say. I want to bring up something adopted the Embrace Mill Creek Plan. And as part of that, there was a component of that which a study was done by the Pennsylvania to the EIP, which is an early intervention and it is done for municipalities 47, which is municipal bankruptcy. Now, I but we could, yeah, every municipality could get that going there. They have several recommendations which the board has already started to take and that was the matters with the sewer. They also recommended getting a stormwater authority that the board of supervisors has done over time. One of the things they talked about was changing the form of government. That was a recommendation and that was done in 2018 by the Pennsylvania Economy League. It is a component to the comprehensive plan. If you look on your website, there's a link there. You just tap on it and has all kinds of good information in there. Sometimes it's kind synopsis of it, it tells you that is one avoid us getting into any sort of financial strain. Very, very important to know, we're not in that, in that where we're at. You never know, we could slip into that.
Anyone else wishing to speak today? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you taking advantage of the time that we allotted for this today. My computer shut down, so I'm going to look at my agenda here, I guess.
Kim, after hearing the citizens' comments today and also the emails that I motion for the township solicitor to draft an ordinance prior to the next township meeting on May 28th, 2024, for us to consider this at our meeting on May 28th. For the 2024 general election, a government as follows. Shall a government study commission existing form of government of Mill Creek Township Erie County of the adoption of an optional form of government plan of government should be colleagues will, give me a second.
I'll second.
A motion was made by Mr. Bach and second
If I could, just a couple of points of clarification out under the, under the code. Else for seven, nine, or 11. I just want to make sure or we can, you know,
Seven was the number that I don't know if you that the group has come out.
I've, I've they varied seven, nine, 11.
Points that could, you know, as you know, there are, there's another option under the the investigation. But also that the basic rules that may apply to us as a fact that, you know, we're, we're a larger township than, than most the second-class townships and place are really designed for smaller municipalities than large tension there. Issue is, is really tied to, do you have a manager? Do you have a mayor? Do you have a council? That, that, you know, those the optional form of government that should be looked into. Again, just another decision point. How that commission, you know, what, what task those two things out. And I just realize that there are these options.
I brought up, Mrs. Weber.
On the ballot, home rule passed the file in second class, not the code. It gives the government that a whole new taxing that would create a whole situation not now, there would be no question that we researched and we came up with seven people. If you've been to meetings, you know what's on the ballot.
About the 25 most populated townships. About the 25 most populated townships only. Are listed as. Were being given information on. Okay. Thank you.
That's only if that commission makes a. Could effectively adopt most of what. Bottlenecks for township of this size.
Study home rule. You don't need to study other types of government.
It allows you to do one or the.
Form also and then do some rule. So that study allows.
I don't I don't believe so.
So.
And and I'll. The commission of seven, nine, or 11 members be allowed. Municipality to consider. Recommend whether or not an optional plan of government should be. That would direct the commission to look. Shall a government study commission of seven, nine, or 11. Form of government of the municipality to consider. And if advisable, to draft and recommend a home. And to look at the home rule charter option. Commission of seven, nine, or 11 members be allowed. Municipality to consider the advisability of. For a home rule charter to recommend. And recommend a home rule charter. Either possibilities and make recommendations on. So there's there's, like I said, there's three.
Well, I think it's pretty common. They think of county council. And a lot. It's home rule because we went to. We went from being a. We're one of five or six counties out of. And we're it. We're one of five or six. So I give them. Who's in there, you're gonna have a problem.
And what what folks are looking for and that they understand what those options are. Kind of what the optional plans of government allowed are. There's three that are. And, you know, a council. The two parties. And then. The the fourth optional plan of government.
You're asking that that be the question. That's. We're not asking you to decide. Asking that that question be put on the ballot. That's all we're asking.
With you, Sue. I'm just kind of pointing out the option. Certain groups of citizens. So, you know, the idea. The forms of government, should we be looking.
I don't think I need the microphone. In the. Home rule charter and as I think Mrs. Weber. Example of how things could run here. Urge you to consider the option.
Sir?
But anyway, will it be a specific? Eleven. And if there are three different options, who will make that decision?
Committee. Yes. And that's what's been presented. That's that was the motion that was. Any other discussion? Okay. All right. Then I'll call for the vote. Mr. Bach, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Olet. And carries. All right. Next, number 26 on the agenda. Communication. Page.
We do not today.
Okay, thank you. Rec. Ms. Marsdeller.
Our summer wage scale. So I'm gonna start there on the. The part-time seasonal wage scale for the 2024 season. Prior years, a 50 cent raise is proposed for all life. Attained maintenance employees, tennis instructors, and day camp counselors. A $1 raise is being proposed proposed for pool concession employees and a dollar per hour life. Valley Community Pool. Parks and Recreation Operations seasonal employee budget line can accommodate for these wage increases without any budget amendments. All proposed increases have been reviewed by the treasurer as well. Before part. With an effective date of 5/15/24.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Marsdeller? Okay, seeing none. Any do I have a motion, sorry, to approve the new wage scale?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Olet. And he just.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries.
Go ahead and.
You just keep going, Ms. Marsdeller.
Employees are requested to be approved for hire and rehire for seasonal. Adult fitness, youth dance, aquatic. And volunteer categories. These individuals oversee. Our programs are highly sought after and well. Their work is essential to the success of our department. Approved seasonal part-time rates for each category of record.
Any questions for Ms. Marsdeller?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Seeing none. Mr. Bach, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. O. Carries. Um, now we have training requests. We have one from the Planning and Development and Zoning Department.
I think we have another.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It just says hiring request on my in the agenda. I apologize. We have another hiring request?
I have it up.
Okay. Mr. Bach, thanks.
Okay, I have it up here. Um.
Oh, it's the seasonal. Okay.
Do you have it?
I have it now. Sorry.
Okay, a request to hire season. Of Skolnick Building Maintenance, hire date of May 7, $14 per hour. This comes from our Administration Department. Jacob would be under Jerry Berger in building maintenance. I'll make a motion for that hire.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Bach and seconded by Mr. Olet. Mr. Bach, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. Next, on the agenda, we have the Sewer Department Training. And this is regarding Eric Pham Collections License Prep. The Sewer Department is seeking approval for Eric Pham to take a sewer collection system exam prep course. This course is offered through Mike and Danica Nelson Consulting Services. This course starts May 22 and runs eight weeks with classes every Wednesday for two hours online. The total cost for this is $880, and funds will be taken from the Sewer Department training expense. And Mr. Donikowski recommends Eric Pham for this. I will make that in the form of a motion to approve Eric Pham getting his collections license prep.
I'll second.
Okay, I made a motion. It was seconded by Mr. Olet. Mr. Olet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bach, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. Now we have, let's see, from Ms. Stutzman. We have the Community in Relations of Sustainability, PADEP Act 101, 902 grant.
Good morning. Thank you. The recent PADEP Act 101, Section 902, Development and Implementation of Municipal Recycling Programs, Grant Round became open and eligible to Mill Creek Township. This particular round permits applicants to request up to $200,000 with 10% to be matched financially by the applicant. The recycling department recommends that the PADEP grant application request total project budget of 2,000, I'm sorry, $220,000. In this grant round, DEP will cover $200,000 with a 10% match from Mill Creek Township, $20,000. Mill Creek Township's grant requests included a high lift loader with a grapple bucket, a star screener machine, 35 gallon toters for curbside recycling, and recycling and composting education. Match funded expenses will include the land lease value of the Mill Fair Compost Center. Four weeks of newspaper advertising for the purchase of the heavy composting equipment is required, and if awarded, the expenses referenced above will be accounted for in the upcoming 2025 CRS budget.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Stutzman? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
You do.
I'll second.
Any discussion? The vote yes. Motion carries. Have next up the firemen. Conference dinner.
I can take it.
We have Mr. Olet.
Annual Fireman's Conference Dinner. The. People attending are a total of $60. I'll make that in the. For those four attendees.
By Mr. Olet, seconded by. Danical. I will call for a vote now. The vote yes. Motion carries. We have executive sessions. 2024 meeting. And matters. Person. Easement township property were discussed. Litigation matters related to easement dispute. Personnel matters. Were discussed.
Other at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I wait. I'm not sure if there'll be in attendance. And the Mill Creek Township School District for having been willing to have them be a part of our meeting. Number 27 on the agenda, citizens to be heard. Any other citizens?
What you know is not.
Oh, sorry. I mean, sir, that I don't know. Dan.
Work. I would like to thank you for doing the right thing and putting the. And I would also like to thank the Parks and Recreation Department for all their hard work. And I drove by today and the pickleball court was packed. So it's definitely money well spent. That's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other citizens to be heard today? Okay. Yes, I would like to, before we adjourn, I want to thank Ms. Marsdeller for all of the hard work and Ms. Murdock as. Today. It was and the report as well, which is available online for our residents. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. A motion was made by.